Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of things. I'd just like to say a big thank you to the Steamboat Days Committee and everybody that did so much work. It was wonderful to see everybody downtown, all the thousands of people on Third Street, especially on Saturday during the day for the car show and the car auction and the carnival and Sunday for the parade. It was just a wonderful event and it was a very well carried out event and it takes a lot of people to do it and it was a great, great week. Also, I have a proclamation I'd like to read for Habitat Restore, their 10th anniversary. Whereas Habitat Restore is our retail operations that sell new and gently-used home improvement goods, furniture, home accessories, building materials and appliances to the public at a deeply discounted price and proceeds. From Habitat Restore are then used to support the mission of Habitat. And whereas the Winona Restore opened its doors on June 27, 2003, as first restore to reopen in the state of Minnesota, and since that time, there are now 11 restores in Minnesota. And whereas 100 percent of the materials sold in the Habitat Restore have been donated by individuals and businesses from southeastern Minnesota and western Wisconsin, and whereas community members have donated over 4,000 volunteer hours each year working at the Habitat Restore, keeping payroll expenses lower, thus contributing directly to the net profitability of the store. And whereas all Restore profits are funneled back into the affiliate to be used to serve additional families by building simple, decent and affordable homes. And due to the financial success of Winona's Habitat Restore, Habitat for Humanity has partnered with 48 families since it built its first home in 1994, with approximately 3,000 volunteer hours contributed to each Habitat home constructed. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Mark Peterson, Mayor of Winona, do hereby congratulate the Habitat for Humanity Restore in the city of Winona on its 10th anniversary of operation of the city of Winona. And that's all I have tonight. City Manager?
I have one item. This is for information for the council and the public. On Sunday, July 7, there will be a K-9 training conference being held here in Winona. It will be at numerous locations throughout the community, including property owned by the Port Authority and Technology Park. I just want the public to understand this. There will be some gunfire with blank rounds shot on Sunday as part of this training, so don't be disturbed by that, just so that people know. That's all.
Hold on.
Mayor Peterson?
Here.
Councilman Thurling?
Here.
Craig?
Here.
Alexander?
Here.
Ayden?
Here.
Borzakowski?
Here.
Double?
Here.
Under the required public hearings, item 2.1 is the proposed 2013 sidewalk replacement project and preliminary assessment rule.
Declare the public hearing open. Anybody here wish to speak? If you do, come to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Michael Reed. I'm in 913 East King Street. And I'm disabled. I live on fixed income. Most of my money goes to doctors. I have many brain injuries and can barely move my lung, but the main thing is I don't have the finances to do the two sidewalk pieces. Someone told me that they could do it for $300, but to wait is it would be cheaper. Well, it's not. It's $150 more. So I might not be eligible for any of this stuff, but I just wanted to come and tell you guys.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Anybody else here wish to speak? Final time, anybody else wish to speak? Keith, do you want to say anything?
Got a closer public hearing first.
Oh, okay. Well, declare the public hearing closed. Now, Keith, City Engineer?
Don't really have much to add, other than this is standard procedure, what we go through every year with the process of going out and inspecting the sidewalks. A lot of them get done by the property owners before it gets to this process. The other ones, we take out and hire a contractor to do it and assess it, but it comes up every year. Prices that we believe are reasonable for the work that's being done.
Okay, thank you. Jerry?
On, just a rough example on Mr. Reed's 473-28. What would that annual amount be? Just a rough guess.
It's been over 10 years?
He's page three.
It's total assessment, $473, we'd probably be $50 a year.
Okay. All right, thank you. Did you hear that, Mr. Reed? You said approximately 50 bucks a year would be the actual cost.
Oh, so I don't have that much cash?
No, no, sir.
Well, I can live with that and I appreciate your help. So you don't need any more?
No, we don't, but you could certainly sit here for the next two hours.
Hey, my lung hurts already. God bless you.
Thank you.
I don't move to approve the attached resolution or adopt.
Motion by Michelle?
Second.
Seconded by Jerry. Any further discussion? George?
Keith, with some of these sidewalks now, it was brought up in the past, can they grind their sidewalk down to level it out? I know we talked about it a few years past.
Yes, we've been allowing them to do that. If there's, if it's just the lip portion that's up, that can be ground down by a contractor.
Would that be something Mr. Reed would be able to do? I mean, do we know offhand, or?
I don't know exactly what his are, is to be done, but if it qualifies, yes. If it's, if it's the lip, it could be. If it's the, if there's a crack or something else, no, it'd have to be replaced.
Okay, could you or, you know, take a look at that, see if the grinding would work for him?
Sure will.
So, and now some of our, in fact, one person brought it up to me, now some of our city sidewalks, which are on city property, well, I guess they're all on city property, but like, you know, let's say the library or here, have we ground our sidewalks down?
We take care of them the same as the other ones, but I'm trying to think where, if we've ground any of ours down, typically we replace those ourselves. I can't think of if we've done it on our own properties as far as grinding.
Okay, but grinding down isn't, is still an option.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing then will vote. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 2.2 are the proposed code amendments for Chapter 43.
Declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak? Ask again, anybody here wish to speak to this item? One final time, anybody here wish to speak? Come to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Dick Van Horn. I live out in Gilmore Valley. But my concern is, my wife and I own a couple of businesses that are within a block of new lodging unit that is being proposed. The two businesses employ somewhere between 10 and 12 people, a couple of which are part-time. And our problem is, being in the Winona State area, we already have a major parking issue. And now, if we let another 16 rooms in there, even though the parking spaces are provided within 300 feet, most college kids like to park a little closer to the door. I guess we're concerned that this is going to probably end up, excuse me, costing us our businesses. And I just wanted to make you people aware of that. And thank you for your listening.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Anybody else here to speak? Last time? Anybody else? Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Muller, would you like to say anything?
The code amendments that council is being asked to consider tonight were recommended by the Planning Commission during a public hearing it had on June 10. Again, as noted in your agenda package, these proposed amendments were initiated as a result of a four-month moratorium that council placed on new development, redevelopment within a two-point, B 2.5 zoning district. Currently, we have approximately a two-block area downtown, which is Zone B 2.5, and that is the only area that is currently, currently includes that zoning. Concerns that were expressed relating to the moratorium were primarily the fact that the current high-rise, condominium high-rise had gone into a default situation. A number of individuals were looking at it for reuse purposes. Given those, we had some issues with density and parking controls or the lack thereof that exists, currently exist in the 2.5 district. So again, that's kind of some background on where these changes are coming from. There aren't a lot of changes that we're looking at, but maybe I'll just kind of highlight those so council understands what we are proposing. The first would be to define our definition section, redefine certain terms in our definition section to make definitions clear relative to boarding and lodging establishments, hotels, motels and rooming units. We did this because we currently don't have a handle on, a good handle on boarding and lodging establishments, so we felt it was necessary to, first of all, define those uses. Secondly, we are proposing that proposed, that's parking standards for boarding and lodging establishments be modified downward basically from a one-space-per-unit standard to 0.65 spaces per certified person. And again, the certifying authority would define the number of certified persons that can be located within a boarding and lodging establishment. Typically, with these uses, that's county, Winona County. The reason we're suggesting a downgrade in the standard is that for full dwelling units within residential districts right now, the off-street parking standard is two per dwelling unit. So if you have a dwelling unit that's got a family in it, your parking standard is two. If you have three unrelated persons in that dwelling unit, it's two. So the ratio is two-thirds. So that's kind of what we've done, is to bring that ratio into this discussion. For rooming units that are accessory to owner-occupied dwellings, the required parking standard would be one per unit. We're looking at modifying off-street parking location standards by closing loopholes, which presently allow certain residential, commercial and institutional uses to provide parking off-site, in some cases, that can be done right now. We feel that this is a standard, this is a requirement that hasn't been used a whole lot, but when it has been used, it has created certain problems in terms of trying to manage the system. If you allow parking off-site, how do you make sure that that parking is provided at all times and so on and so forth? So we're suggesting that loophole be closed and simply all uses provide parking on site, on their property. We're clarifying our three permitted use standards by eliminating outdated language. We demand the B1 commercial zoning district by permitted lodging and boarding establishment as permitted uses in the district. This is the first district, the B1 would be the first district where the use would be a permitted use. They would not be permitted within our three multiple-family zoning districts, but they would be permitted there. And then we're looking to amend the B 2.5 district in a couple of areas, the first being density. We came to you, you know, on April 15, we noted that one of our concerns was that there is currently a lack of density standards in the 2.5 zone. We're currently requiring or suggesting that a standard of 1,000 square feet of lot area for each unit, rooming or sleeping unit. There'll be dwelling units, rooming and sleeping unit be employed. What that means, basically, to give you kind of an idea of how this works, if you have an acre of land, that's 43,560 square feet, you could have 43 dwelling units. That number divided by 1,000 gives you 43 dwelling units. We are not dictating what kind of dwelling units you can have on that property. Initially, we were looking at establishing a 1,000-square-foot minimum unit size, but we did away with that. So all we're looking at right now is, we're trying to control the overall density of a property and by employing this 1,000-square-feet of lot area for each dwelling unit. Comprehensive plan encourages a mix of housing units within the 2.5 district. We feel that the 1,000-square-foot standard would do that. If you know what the overall maximum density carrying capacity of a property is, you can put 43 sleeping rooms on it, you can put 43 two-bedroom condominium units or apartments or anything else, three-bedroom. It'd be, as a developer, it would be your choice to do that. Finally, we did, we are proposing a couple of changes to the 2.5 district in terms of off-street parking. Currently, the 2.5 district that we have downtown, portion of that is located within our parking overlay district, which essentially does not require any parking at all. And the current condominium project falls within that. If you're located on the lumberyard site and you develop something on that site, then there would be a parking standard. Just to make the plane feel equal, we're proposing eliminating the overlay district in favor of language, which would not require parking for commercial uses, but it would require that any residential use within the 2.5 district be subject to minimum standards that are consistent with the parking ordinance. So again, if you have 43, let's say, two-bedroom units on a site, on an acre, your parking standard would be two per unit. So you'd have to have a total of 86 off-street parking spaces. Same would apply if you're looking at simply sleeping rooms. You could have 43 sleeping rooms. In that case, parking standard wouldn't be quite as great because the ratio is 0.65 per certified person. So it kind of depends on how many people a unit would certify for, but, so, anyway, those, in summary, that's, we're looking at all the, the changes that we're looking at are directed straight at, some of them are directed straight at the 2.5 zone, density and off-street parking standards. Some of the others are more indirect, but they do play into, or could play into, the 2.5 zoning district. Commission did recommend approval of the changes you have before you. And generally, the commission in presenting this recommendation felt that the proposed changes would support comprehensive plan ideals relative to the intent and purpose of the mixed-use commercial district and that they would fully address those density and off-street parking concerns that surfaced prior to moratorium adoption. So should council concur with this recommendation? There is an ordinance in your package, which we would suggest that you introduce tonight. We are currently at about month three of the four-month moratorium, so we are ahead of schedule right now.
Councilmembers?
I would, I would move that we, that we accept the proposed code amendments.
Motion by Pam. I'll second it. Second by you. Right, discussion?
Yeah, I would ask again, Mr. Muller, to comment on the comments Mr. Van Horn made about his situation. I assume this is development in the Mark and Main Street area.
Yeah, the proposal that you have tonight is strictly an ordinance change. We're not looking at a specific site or talking about a specific site or how this might, this language might play into that site tonight. We have a situation located on Center Street where a developer's looking at constructing another lodging house facility in that neighborhood. The neighbors are concerned with it. Give you an example of, I referenced the fact that currently certain uses, certain uses do not have to meet on-site parking requirements. This would be one case where that would not have to be done. But the ordinance would currently require that parking would be, would need to be provided within 300 feet of the site. Neighbors are concerned about it, including Mr. Van Horn, but that, again, is not what we're talking about tonight. Planning Commission is reviewing a site plan for that project. As my understanding that requests have been submitted for Planning Commission review of that site plan, so that would be probably the forum at which people could speak directly to the project.
Yeah, I think there's been concern in that neighborhood with some of the other lodging that has been built there and the concern they have about off-street parking for those, those residents that didn't have to be contiguous with the property being developed.
Right. So if any person has a direct concern with that project, I guess I'd suggest contacting our office and we will be establishing a, probably a Planning Commission meeting at which that will be discussed.
So what would this, what would this ordinance then, how would this, by introducing it or passing it, you know, in our second reading, what would this mean for a situation like that?
Maybe I would defer to city attorney, my question.
In this particular situation, if the ordinance was passed and there was a project proposal of a similar nature, it would require the parking to be on-site. So they would have to deal with the parking issues associated with that use on-site as opposed to other areas surrounding.
Okay, okay. Then I have one final question of Mr. Muller. Sorry, Mark, I didn't answer that at the same time, but, but, you know, there's some, some different definitions in our proposed ordinance here on boarding establishments, sleeping rooms, hotel motel. I don't see it's much different than what we've had before, but by changing these definitions, are we changing how the city's lodging taxes apply?
No, that's not being changed.
Okay. Thank you.
George?
As I follow this here, it appears, and even in newspaper articles, that a lot of this is being spearheaded because of the McNally development down on, on Washington Street there. If this passes, and I was, and someone was to buy the McNally property, what can they do and not do? This passes, someone purchases it, what, I guess more or less, what can't they do with that?
Okay. You're talking about specifically to the McNally?
Correct, yes.
Currently, I forget how many units he was proposing, I think it was 20 units, that he was proposing for that building, but that building currently sits on a footprint that would not meet the standard that we're looking at developing, adopting tonight. It's too small. So let's look at a scenario where somebody is to come in and they want to add units to that building. Our non-conforming use provisions would allow that to happen, but you would have to get a variance and to do that first. And you would have to expand the size, the footprint of that building by 1,000 square feet per, for every dwelling unit that you add to the building. So you'd have to make it, the footprint larger, you have to have more off-street parking and so on. Now, if your intent is just to use, continue developing that building the way it was started, you can do that now, if you want. Even though the site is deficient in terms of what we're looking at, in terms of land area, deficient on parking, you could finish the project that was started. The adjoining lumberyard property would be subject to the new standard. That parcel is about an acre and a quarter in size, I think. So that translates into, let's say, 55 units at 1,000 square feet per, 1,000 square feet of lot area per unit. So some uses are subject to the lot area standard, some aren't. If you're looking at a motel for that site, that, there would be no lot area standard, but there would be for any residential use down there.
So in a sense, this kind of really handcuffs if anyone really wants to purchase it?
It would, it allows development, reasonable development, but it lays out the expectation for that development. We'll know exactly what, how many units can be placed there. Does it handcuff somebody? If, you know, if somebody's creative enough and incorporate, you know, some commercial with residential, you know, it could be quite profitable.
Would there be any way, whether this passes or not, could that be used for student housing?
Sure.
Even with, even with the new standards passed, it could be used for it, too?
Yeah, we don't dictate where in the city student housing can be located, but in this case, we would know how many units there could be and, but could it be student housing? Could be. Obviously, you look at what the purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan for this area was, that we would try to encourage something a level above that, maybe working individuals, professors, not students, but professors or people who are here a short time and leave and move, move on. That was what we were looking at trying to do, but our challenge was how do you guarantee that? That's where the 1,000 square feet dwelling size came into play at first. If you define 1,000 square feet, that's a pretty big apartment. But it does reduce the flexibility of mixed use, the term mixed use, so it doesn't work very well. But to answer your question, there is no guarantee that we would stop student housing.
One of the concerns I have, as I think most people were, when the moratorium was adopted, thought particularly that this just meant, pertained to McNally's building. And my concern is, is that since the area goes beyond that building, do, have those property owners who are affected by this, number one, are they grandfathered in, that they can go back and still, if what they bought the property for, do what they wanted to do? Or do they fall under these new rules and have they been notified directly of the changes so that they had an opportunity to come to the public hearings?
They have not been, we did not notify anybody directly. We're dealing with a code change and we did not, we did not make a personal contact, one-on-one contact. We had, we've had, some of those individuals show up at our Planning Commission meetings, but did we make a contact directly? No, we did not. Would they be somehow hamstrung? You know, what's there is there, obviously. It's, the lumberyard site is a bit unusual and that's large for a downtown location. And it's rare to find a piece of property that large downtown. So for most, I think there's reasonable opportunity, even for 1,000 square feet. to allow some residential within any building downtown. If you have four thousand square foot lot or five thousand square foot lot, you could have five dwelling units. You can have commercial or a restaurant, a continuing restaurant if you want. Our intent here is to not hamstring somebody from not doing what they're doing now at all. But I think there's reasonable opportunity to, to do more in most cases if they want.
Michelle?
I, I have a problem with the thousand square feet. I have a problem with the required parking in a downtown district when there's zero lot lines. And I have a feeling this will, as you point out, affects more than just the McNally property, which was approved the way it is, which is sixteen units. But to set a square footage of that size when we're short on what I would call traditional housing, although technically in the state of Minnesota, there is no such thing as student housing, but traditional adults like you're talking about that want to come here and find a place to live, they can't. I get calls weekly. And also the low-income housing, when we make units bigger, it's harder for them to afford them. So even if we wanted to make dwellings that were affordable for people with lower income or less resources, this would close them out. Actually, this would make it ideal for college rental, because the bigger the space is, the more bedrooms you can get in, or the more that each person is willing to pay on an individual basis, which is why so many of the units end up going for college rental, because they're, they're rented by person, not by lot size, not by property size, not even always by room. And so I have concerns about this, allowing that to be developed the way it should or continue to be developed. And actually, from my experience living here, what I've seen of benefit to the community is when people do live downtown, and lots of them. Businesses come back into the community because they're serving the people who live here. There isn't actually a downtown parking problem until the two thousand plus people that work every day come down here. But at four-thirty, you could park anywhere downtown, could walk anywhere. So, and I find that a lot of the people that choose to live downtown do it carless. So I think when we're talking about density issues, downtown is an ideal place for renters. Especially if we're talking about college rental, if you want to talk about them, although I find colleges to be delightful. For the most part, they're good tenants. But when you move them from the residential areas, there's actually less impact in the community. I've never had a police call to any of our downtown rental, because it's not an issue. There are no neighbors that get upset with them. So I find, and I find that if, if the neighbor who does have a zero lot line would like to develop his property or build a tower, like we have downtown for low-income or senior housing, he wouldn't be able to do it under this, this ordinance. And I think that suggesting that a variance is possible, I think we all know how difficult it is to get a variance with the six requirements from the state. And, and, because we sat here last time when someone came and wanted to expand their dog business at home, and we couldn't do it because they didn't meet the requirements. So I think to suggest that any of these businesses would be able to get a variance is, is, I think, very unlikely. And I don't know about the rooming unit part of this, because I thought we were just going to be looking at the B two-point-five, but it seems like it expanded further. And I do have concerns about how this would affect all the B zones throughout the entire city. There are businesses far on the west end that have zero lot lines that haven't looked at expanding upstairs, whether it would be commercial or rental. But this would limit them from doing that, because they couldn't provide parking on their, their structure. If we were to take J and K and move it out of the spot where it is, as it is, people can't develop it because of the cost to bring it up to code before you even look at putting even a, let's say, a sewing room up there for, for the festival. There are so many already restrictions on downtown businesses being able to be developed, and I think this makes that almost improbable, impossible. And I'm for downtown growth and development. And I, since I've grown up here, I've seen what can happen. Well, most of you were probably here when they started allowing business, I mean, businesses to find funding to provide housing downtown. It changed the entire feel of our community. And I think this would take some of that away. And I really, really do not want to see that building sit there unfinished and unoccupied for any length of time, which I think this will do. Because although it, it limits the number of units you can put in, and quite frankly, any business owner is going to look at the cost versus the potential benefit to them. And if one side weighs too heavy, they're not going to do it. And for them, it does come down to how many people they can put in there. And, and even a family. If you have two kids or you're retired and you want an extra bedroom, it matters to them how big or small their unit can be. I personally would want a smaller unit. I would want less square footage, I'm single. But I just, I, I do not like the way the code is written. Of course, I have no problems with the definitions, but I'm not, I'm not happy about what I think this would do in the business district throughout the entire city. And that's just, I, I'm not in favor of the way it is written now, and I won't vote for it, so I don't know where I stand.
Maybe I can make a couple of comments. First of all, we, we need to remember, we are not changing the overlay district in general for downtown for parking issues, for housing. Only in the B two-point-five, which is being removed, that portion that's in the overlay district, which doesn't require parking, is being removed, which is about half the district mark. So your issues with downtown above businesses downtown and not having to provide parking, the overlay district will still apply?
But not just, I was just using J and K building as an example. I know the overlay district is different, but there are businesses throughout the entire community, from Mankato all the way down to the other side, that are zero lot lines, which means they can't, in, in fact, you can't improve or sell the property for its true value. I mean, I'm thinking back to the building I'm in when there was blue tarp over the windows, and they had to sell it for twenty-four thousand just back in the nineteen nineties, when that building should have been worthwhile more than that. And it wasn't until the city came up with the funding to allow housing downtown without parking, that that property actually gained some value and got a tax base and allowed the owner who had his commercial at, you know, they don't pay as much to be able to afford to sell or to own the building. So, and, and I'm, I'm even thinking about the parking standards that are going to change. I mean, this will affect Winona State. I think it's gonna, I, I don't think they can come for a variance. And I'm not saying they shouldn't, if they're building a new building, should not have to have parking onsite, because I think they should. If you're planning a new project, find a way to make it work. But I think eighty-six spots for a one-bedroom unit or two-bedroom is, is a lot. When you think about your home, there's usually two spots, and you may have five kids with a car each. I mean, it's a lot of parking spots. And I think we're, some of these things, I think, are specific to what's ever happening on Center Street, or, or, you know, this change here in the rooming units. I know, I know letters went out, because I've got angry people in my office today. Some letters went on, out on that issue. I just, and I'm not even, I mean, I want to look at that entirely separate from the B two-point-five anyway, but I'm just, I'm just not in favor of the way it's written. I think we're going to sit, have an empty building, which I don't want for our town.
Well, I appreciate your comments, Michelle. And for myself, I'd like, I'd like some time to further understand this, so I understand the repercussions for the downtown district, because one of, I strongly believe that having more people live downtown is the key to, the key to the growth and the key to the, the kind of the direction that we want there. And I don't understand the repercussions for this. I'm also curious about the rooming units, rooming units that are accessory to owner-occupied dwellings. We're adding a parking place requirement for one per, per each unit. So is this, are houses throughout the town that are, that have these rooming units, are they grandfathered in? Or they now have to, because some of these, some of these units are like, they're in houses, there's no more?
Any dwelling unit in town, owner-occupied dwelling unit can rent to two roomers maximum, unless you're on a thirty percent block, then you can't. But so that's permitted virtually everywhere, if you own a home, basically. You can have a maximum of two roomers. Currently, we don't have a standard for those. We're looking at applying a standard for those.
So one, one parking place?
Per certified person.
Per unit?
Right.
But people who have houses in the center of town that, that do accept roomers now, and they have no more room, what's, are they grandfathered in, or?
Right. I mean, if there's, right, I mean, what you have, you have now.
Okay.
They're, they'd be grandfathered. This will apply to anything that's created from this point forward.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just going to restate to, my, my concern is people who have invested in property with, that may not have activated what their plan is yet or desire to sell it, who were not notified that it's going to affect them. And that, and that bothers me, that, that they may have thought, as I did, that it only affected the McNally property. And, and I think we owe it to them to get their input and to bring, and to let them be aware of how it may affect them.
Well, I'm, I'm actually with you on that. I'm a little surprised that the property owners that might have been affected by this weren't notified. I might suggest that we table this. It sounds like we have time. I don't know if there's any interest in doing that.
Before we table, and I agree with you, because once we table, we can't talk about it, but letters went out, people weren't contacted. Who was contacted, which property, which project was talked about? Because it seems like, you said letters went out.
Yeah, I had an angry person in my office shaking a letter at me today about, I'm guessing the property on Center Street that is looking for development. And they were told they had to respond by today, and the people felt like they didn't have enough time to respond, and they wanted me to stop it tonight, and I, I...
And again, I, I encourage you tonight to put that issue aside, because that can confuse the issue a little bit, but...
But that, that is what we're talking about, because wouldn't that be the boarding, lodging, rooming units?
It would, right.
So we are talking about it tonight. It's on our agenda.
Right, right.
That's the, that's the problem, because that's where I...
Right, but I don't know if everybody understands the scope of the project, and we're kind of in an early stage of reviewing that. In that case, because the site plan was revolved, involved, we did send out notices to everybody within a hundred and fifty feet, notifying them that we had the site plan, they can come in and look at it and request Planning Commission review if they wanted to. But again, the code amendments were simply code amendments. We did not notify anybody within the two-point-five district about them, the changes.
Can I make a motion? That we postpone the discussion until letters have been sent out?
We already have a motion on the table.
Okay, withdraw the first motion.
As a secondary for the motion, I'm, I'm certainly willing to withdraw that second if the proposal, proposer will withdraw the motion, and then we can give some direction based on our discussion, the city staff perhaps, and to take up the issue again at our next meeting, because as, as our city planner said, the moratorium itself has another month to run. So we do have some time to hopefully talk about it some more, get additional input from affected businesses and property owners before we, we make these changes. So I guess that, you know, that is my proposal, just as, as a comment, too, that, that perhaps if we can separate the, the changes into one that is a housekeep, basically, I see a lot of housekeeping things here. So if we could separate those two, you know, that might make it a little easier to comprehend, and then deal with the B two-point-five issue as a separate ordinance, rather than, you know, including it in all, all, all of one along with that. I mean, I think the Planning Commission did a great job and had a great discussion, but there's issues here that I'm hearing tonight that I'm, you know, not comfortable with moving forward at this point. So I'm, you know, would withdraw the second to the motion. My second.
I would, I, I would, no, I, I moved. I would withdraw, I would withdraw the motion.
Okay, so the motion's been withdrawn?
Right.
Okay.
I would move that we bring this back for discussion after the affected property owners have been notified in writing, so that we can gain their input in a public hearing and how they feel about the changes.
That's second.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Michelle.
How many property owners could that be?
Could be many.
I mean, it's not... Okay, okay, good. Now, would this be, we had a... There is a second on the table. Tonight we had a public hearing on it. Would it be possible? I suppose we'd have to continue the public hearing, but is it possible, since this is rather a complicated issue, to have a pre-council meeting, or is that not appropriate if we're going to continue a public hearing?
Public hearing's not closed.
But would we need another public hearing if we're still looking at introduction?
Well, you, you, you held a public hearing on this ordinance and you closed that public hearing. It's certainly within your discretion to look for more information at this point or to have a pre-council meeting. I, we don't need another public hearing unless we substantively, I mean, really substantively change this ordinance.
Okay. That's a good point. So if possible, when we bring this back, if we could have a, a usual pre-council meeting to kind of flush some of this stuff out of it?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. Okay, any further discussion?
We moved to table it.
We'll postpone it.
Postpone it.
Oh.
Till, till the property owners are notified.
So we should vote on that. Okay. Any discussion? We'll vote, all is in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries.
Under the petition's request and communications, item three-point-one is a request by the Winona Swim Club for use of the Aquatic Center for the two thousand fourteen USA Minnesota Swimming Twenty-Third Annual River City Splash Finals.
I'd move to approve the request.
Motion by Michelle.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Al. Discussion. Hearing none will vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries.
Item three-point-two is a request by the American Queen to dock in Winona. You have the dates before you. I would note that the July eleventh date has been canceled due to high river levels.
I'd move to approve the request.
Motion by Michelle.
Second.
Seconded by Pam. I'll note they can't get through the bridge in Hannibal.
I mean, that's not funny, because that means the water's really high, but wow.
Water's high, and we're, a lot of people disappointed they won't be here. Hopefully, they can get here in August. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries.
Item three-point-three is a request by the Columbus Foundation to dock the Nina and Pinta at Levy Park, July eighteenth through the twenty-fourth.
You'd move to approve that request?
Motion by Michelle.
Second.
Seconded by George. Discussion?
Does the motion include, then, the closing of Cal-Fremling Drive as well?
Yes.
It's been part of the request? Okay. Just my only comment is, I had the pleasure, when I was Convention and Visor Bureau Director, to work with Captain Sanger, when the first boat, the Nina first docked here years ago. And it was a pleasure, and the boats are wonderful, and when they're here, please go down to the levee and take a look at them, because it's really remarkable when you see the size of the vessels, as close as they are to the original ones that Columbus sailed on, that people made that oceanic voyage and survived. And as they say, the rest is history, but it's a wonderful living history example. I urge people to attend that.
We draw a huge crowd.
Yeah.
They do a good job.
We'll vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries.
Item three-point-four is a request to host the Single Speed USA Bike Race on August seventeenth, and Mr. Scott Sherman is here, and you have a draft license agreement for your review.
I'd move to approve the request.
Second.
Move by Michelle, seconded by Jerry. If you'd like to address the council. And our audience?
My name's Scott Sherman. I'm part of the twenty-nine single group. I'm also the elected president of the Mountain Bike Club in town. Basically, we just would like to request permission to hold the race on August seventeenth. We've talked to quite a few different entities in town. We've been working with Park and Rec, Chattleville, and Julie Fossbender. We've also been working with Monica Hennessy-Mohan in regards to establishing a single-day temporary on-sale liquor license through the nonprofit of Winona Airview Mountain Bikers, the five-oh-one C-three group in town. Essentially, we're bringing in two thousand seventy-five racers from across the country. This is a traveling mountain bike race that will be held here one year only. Last year, it was in Vermont, and we won the rights to host it in Minnesota, and we chose Winona as that town to host it. It has also been in Colorado and Arizona in the past, so this will be a one-time deal. But we believe... but we believe it'll be Lake Trynona, and that'll bring a lot of people to the area. It'll show off our community and the beautiful businesses and community that we have here, so.
Well, we thank you for choosing Winona.
Absolutely.
Helping us make Winona an outdoor Mecca for the Midwest.
I hope to do that for years to come.
All right, thank you.
That was great work.
Mr. Mayor, just a comment, I support this motion. I don't have any questions, but I just want to compliment you, Mr. Sherman, and your group for bringing this to Winona, and I especially think it's appropriate, because that's my birthday, so. Good job.
Thank you.
We'll vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Item 3.5 is a request to close King Street by Winona State University on Tuesday, August 20th, for their move-in day.
I'd move to approve the request.
Motion by Michelle.
Second.
Seconded by George. Do we know the hours? I didn't see it in the letter.
I believe it's all day.
All day?
And not sun.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries.
Item 3.6 is a request by MCs to use a portion of parking lot 12 on July 13th for a fundraiser for the Gilbert Brown Foundation. Mr. Clint Evans is here. I would remind the council, the MCs is the former Scheids Bar. They've renamed it effective today, and he, Mr. Evans, will describe for you what the Gilbert Brown Foundation is about.
Hi, thank you. Gilbert Brown is a former Green Bay Packer, and he has a foundation that we've worked with at the campground in Alma, my parents' campground. So we've worked with him for about five years. Primarily, what he, his foundation gives to 140 different charities. It's primarily dealing with underprivileged children in schooling, but right now, his main focus is to raise awareness for bullying in schools. They've been making booklets and pamphlets that they've been giving out to different schools, so I know that's his new push this year. But other than that, there's 140 charities that money goes to, and that's his charity.
Do you have a goal of what you'd like to raise?
We do not have a goal. We're not sure how big this is going to be, considering he's a Packer.
That's embarrassing.
So, we are, for the barbecue that we're planning to host outdoors, all the food that we, or all the plates that we sell is going to go towards his foundation. They don't actually arrive until 10 o'clock, and then they have, they have different games and ways that they raise money for his foundation when he's here, and then we're going to try to raise some money before they arrive as well. So, not a realistic goal right now that I can think of, but as much as we can raise for them.
Al.
Mr. Evans, quick question.
Yep.
Does Bluff Country Co-op, the business that shares your building, are they aware of it? I know it's, you know, later in the evening, but...
I'm not sure. Matt's been here a little bit more. He's the one who wrote the letter, and I assume that he has spoken with the Co-op and with Scott, our landlord, about this, so I can follow up and get back to my view of Monica if you want.
I think that would be appropriate. Thank you. Then I would move to approve this request.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries.
Under unfinished business, item 4.1 is to ward the contract for the lake park bike path reconstruction. We had only one bid, and that was from Dun Blacktop.
I would move to, who was, who started? George?
No, go ahead, Al.
Oh, I would move to approve the resolution awarding the contract to Dun Blacktop.
I'll second that.
Motion by Al, seconded by George. Discussion.
If you're in council, maybe one correction. On the agenda item, it talks about coming from the park maintenance fund balance. That's not completely correct. It's 24,000 is coming from the Rotary donation. There's approximately 70,000 which is coming from the Coke bottle sales and other donations.
That's right.
And there's $100,000 which are in the current budget under the Levy Bike Trail, which would be allocated to this. So the remaining $370,000, give or take, would be through bond sales that we talked about in conjunction with the airport. So it's not just from the park maintenance, it's from all those different funds.
Okay, thank you.
Wasn't the original bid higher?
The estimate?
Yeah.
Yeah, the estimate was $616,000.
No, I mean the actual bid that came in.
No, this was just, this is the bid that we received, and it's about $50,000 less than the estimate.
When would they begin construction on it?
We anticipate August. There's a window that they can go within from beginning to end, but we're anticipating it'll be August.
That's both paths, correct?
Yes.
Yay! I want to say that.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries.
Under new business, item 5.1 is the Minnesota Main Street Memorandum of Understanding. I'd move to approve the resolution. I would second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Discussion. George.
Yeah, what is all this about, then?
We don't have that much time, George.
Michelle, you serve on the...
Well, you're on the port, and we, last year, voted to fund, for the first year at least, through the port and the city support, a program, the Minnesota Main Street Program, which we were just given the letter, allowing us to be inducted into one of the Minnesota Main Street programs. And they actually sent a fantastic letter that praised Carlos Espinoza Delishment and David Bitner, as well as the steering committee, for a fantastic application, one of the best they've ever seen. It's really, I'm sure you all got actually that email that talked about it. And so I think what we're doing here is, as a council, giving our support to being a part of the Main Street Program, because there are some things that we agreed to do and that they agree to do when it's a joint.
Listen, with the port, we helped, well, Al and I and the other members helped kick all this off to get going, so.
Yes.
Judy?
The port authority is really a funding source for the project, which I think is great, because it gives us that option. The memorandum of understanding is a requirement that the municipality enter into that to be a partner in this program, and that we understand what's going to happen in our downtown, which I think is another good piece of the program, and that the city itself is a partner in addition to the port authority as a funding source.
Thank you.
We're looking for volunteers, George.
Okay.
Second.
Al?
Well, we're taking steps, and this is another step along the goal of using a program that has been proven successful in the past, and we hope will be applicable in our downtown area. So I'm supportive of the program and this resolution.
Good. We'll vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
I'll start with Al. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Thanks to city crews, too, for, Public Works Director Nelson for addressing the branches and trees that have fallen in our community over the last rainy few, seems forever, months, I guess, but they did a good job focusing on safety, and perhaps it didn't take as quick a time as some would like to have those branches removed, but they were eventually removed, and I thank them for that. I'd also like to thank city engineer Brian DeFrang and the street superintendent Mike Vigerstaff for working with residents in the Oak and Elm area around Broadway to solve a traffic problem there. I think we have a start in solving some speeding traffic there that hopefully it'll help that, and if not, we'll take additional steps. And then don't forget, this Sunday is the airshow at the Winona Municipal Airport, Max Conrad Field. There's a breakfast that goes on in the morning. I understand there's plane rides that are out there, and go out there on Sunday, and the weather, I think, is going to be pretty nice. And, you know, you can't never tell with the rain you've had, but it should be a great time, and I know I have some grandchildren that are looking forward to it. So thank you, that's all I have.
I've got a few things, I'll make it fast. Also, kudos to the, well, first off, Steamboat Days, all the volunteers are involved in it. There were so many. I think your changes went off, it seemed, at least to those of us who were not directly involved, that it went off without a hitch. I'm sure there were, but you guys did it look seamless. So to all of the volunteers, and the city crews who worked extra hard, thank you so very much. It was very good. Getting a lot of calls on lawns that aren't mowed, et cetera, et cetera, that this is possibly the worst year we've had. They didn't mow their lawns because it was too wet, now that it got away from them, well, we're just going to wait until fall, doesn't work that way, you still gotta mow your lawn. Foreclosed properties or neighbors who are just wanting to go unnatural, please, before you get too upset with the neighbor or with just living with the problem, contact the city or contact any one of us. And I want to thank Judy, the crews have been great, Keith, your department, everybody, Lucy, but if you don't feel comfortable contacting, feel comfortable, talk to us, it's anonymous, we'll take care of it. Foreclosed property is kind of a problem. That's a very quick fix. Give us the address, and within three, four days, it's done. So thank you to taking care of all of that. I've also noticed this year more than ever, guess what's called, stickers. Those are the little sticks and branches that grow up kind of off the base of a tree and are incredibly unsightly, and then they end up sticking all over the sidewalk. If you take care of your property, it is your responsibility, should be your responsibility. Theoretically, it kind of falls to the city, because it is a boulevard tree. Never seen as much of a problem as we have this year. Encourage all property owners, and yes, you two landlords, please take care of it, it only takes a few minutes. If, but if nobody's taking care of it, again, let us know, and the overworked tree crew will have it done with them as soon as they can, because it, again, it only isn't unsightly, but it obstructs the sidewalks, and it's a safety issue. Couple of other items. I was down in the east end at the compost site on Saturday and drove past Hemker's East End Salvage. I'm just kind of curious on what the status is on that piece of property. Heard some interesting rumors, and I know they're just rumors, but those things spread around Winona. So if you can, tell us now. If not, if you just want to give us an update on that piece of property, next meeting would be fine. I appreciate it. Then, not a rumor, WSU has been approaching a number of property owners with the potential of purchasing, actually not WSU, but the foundation, right around central of town, looking at another housing project. I'm wondering if, yeah, and I guess the going price is assessed value plus 10 percent, not a deal. Well, 15, no?
It's 15. Just saying.
I'm curious if, in fact, they are working on this master plan with the city of Winona. I hope so. And if not, let's work with them on their master plan. My understanding is it's not, and we're kind of blink paying catch-up, and we've always been told at every meeting it's going to be part of the master plan, and we're partners. Well, this is affecting us. Also, if it's another foundation issue, that is a tremendous amount of property being taken off the tax rolls. The last project they did, a phenomenal project, that had to go to court in order to become off the tax rolls, and that's kind of iffy. So if they're going to be doing more, just work with the city as you're moving forward, but we're not going to just lay down and have more property go without actually trying to fight it again to see if we can keep some of that in the tax rolls. That's it. Thank you.
You need to save the word.
Yeah. Just once every six years, I gotta have anything.
I talked to Mr. Fourth Ward's, one of his people. He actually was saying thank you, because the street crews went through and cleaned up all the sand and stuff from the winter, but then he said that he wished that after they had done that, that instead of making the potholes bigger, that they would have just come behind the trucks with pothole filler. So if someone can go and look around Bluebird Court area and Bluffview Circle, apparently there's some truck-sized potholes. I don't know, George, I'm nicer than you or something that they called me. I don't know. Normally, your people don't call me, but that's all I have.
Say that. Oh.
I was kind of following along the same lines as Jerry mentioned, is that I would remind the people that live in the, where there is no curb and gutter, that the road right-of-way does not end at the blacktop, and they need to not put little flags in there to let people think that they can't park off the blacktop. And also, people who have put signs up five feet off the blacktop that do not mow this area, that our right-of-way goes considerably beyond the edge of the blacktop, and that, well, we may not mow it, they need to, and/or we may have a crew go in there and do it for them. But most of those right-aways, particularly West Burn Valley, is 66-foot of right-of-way, and I think it's probably about a 24-foot road, so just think about that.
Thank you, Pam.
Yes, I just wanted to remind everyone that the Minnesota Department of Transportation will be presenting its new plans, or its updated plans, for the new Winona Bridge project. That will be a public meeting on July 11th. I don't have the time right here. I presume that would be on the city website. As we get closer to the time, will that be put on the city website? Yes.
Okay, so look on the city website for the time, and come to see what the plan is for the new areas. Pam, has Minda announced this meeting?
Yes. We all got email. I got an email, did you get an email?
Yes, right. I'm probably on the basis of an email.
Maybe they didn't tell you again, so you could open the city hall to your hand. Yeah, they, I don't know how, I got one.
Is it 7:00 City Hall?
They said City Hall, 7:00 PM. Okay. I'll see if I can find the email again and get it to you. Send it to me.
What if you had a meeting and nobody came? Is this the one they do? Anything else?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. As long as we're speaking about natural state areas and mowing and so on, I guess I would like to compliment the railroad. I know the properties in the east end of Winona, where there's always been a grass problem, it appeared to be mowed a couple of times this year already, so...
Instead of the six that was necessary, they did it twice, they were giving them a break.
They did it.
Well, I know a couple of areas I know that were a problem, I went by, and I damn near fell out of the truck when I seen it was mowed. But anyway, they have been, they have been doing, doing their mowing, so. And also, yeah, you know, to the street department, you know, I've been calling Mike and Keith and Brian, and as soon as they pick up the phone, you know, like around quarter to seven in the morning, they right away, hello, George. So it's kind of been an on-phone call every day with those people, and I thank them for their response to the concerns that I have brought to them. Steamboat Days, again, a big thank you, and I told people around the beverage garden, they were complimenting highly strong beer this year. I said, thank former Mayor Miller, Jerry Craig, and myself, because we were big drivers behind. We always wanted strong beer, and after 12 years, we got strong beer. So anyway, they appreciated that.
It took 12 years.
And also, if you looked into paper today, it was published before, but there is a 17-year-old Jerry Miller in there as a lifeguard. As I went past the bathing beach today over to the boat club, many people sunbathing, many people swimming, even though the water was high, playing volleyball, football, et cetera. So have to tell, just compliment Jerry right now, that he looks today just like he did back when he was 17 years old, so. Thank you. And happy 4th of July, everyone.
Under the consent agenda, there are two items, approval of the minutes from June 17th, and the final adoption of an ordinance to vacate the alley north of Fairfax Street.
I would move to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Al, seconded by Jerry. Discussion. Hearing none will vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign.
Mayor, I move adjourned.